Work session, let it begin. We have the Region Hazard Mitigation Plan, I think, at first, Mark, is that right? And I see him sitting there, so go right in, young man.
Commissioners, I come before you for the adoption of the Region L Hazard Mitigation Plan. Understand that the largest portion of this plan is put together by contractor. And the entire plan is 380 pages.
I noticed.
Very large document. And with that said, it includes Johnson, Warren, and Leavenworth County, that's our region. The part that goes back into the Leavenworth County is the goals and the objectives. Goals is a visionary document that we can look at, as well as the plan. When we look at the visionary, we have, it's a five-year plan, so it was adopted in late November. It is our task as emergency management to go through those goals and work through all the cities, school districts, water districts, for those that want to participate in this process. I was at Leavenworth School District last November, Commissioner, and presented their, to get their adoption processing out of that, to make sure that their goals and objectives that they had selected was set forth for the plan. I'll get it out here. Leavenworth County has 50 goals. I know that sounds like a lot. Some of it is just basic staff time. And it would look like a goal to manage a current search program. Yeah, that's a goal that we've already set, but we want to make sure that we maintain it. So that's half-time that we look at that. Different planning processes that we look at is another part of the goals that we do on a regular basis, reaching on all hazards. Commissioner, you talked earlier, when Jamie was talking on epidemiology, the state of Kansas asked us to put that into some goals. If for some reason the state was to produce that program, then we have the vision to at least get our people trained into another program. That's why I think I said $500 per training to work through that epidemiology tracking. Right now, everything's fine, but again, just a vision for the next five years. What's nice about this is that if we don't meet these goals, it's not going to do anything to us. We could just continue that to the next planning period, through the next mitigation process, which will come due in 2020. The plan is a five-year plan, and with that said, we go through the process on an annual basis to see where we're at with these goals. If we do not adopt the plan, we would not be eligible for hazard mitigation funds, and the brick grant as well. Right now, the brick grant went away, and that's for federal funding, that was one of the, they said they'd be bringing it back probably after July. But the hazard mitigation grant, how that's obtained is out of every dollar that is spent for public assistance during natural disasters. 2% of that goes back into a fund, if you will, or hazard mitigation fund, that's eligible on a competitive basis to all 105 counties in state Kansas. Priority is set to those counties that would have the disaster within, so like in 2019, when we had the disaster come through here, we would have first claim if we had hazard mitigation grant that works through that process. The hazard mitigation grant is a 75-25 split. 75% of it is paid by the federal government, and then 25% of that is paid on the local basis. And that could be in-kind, or that could be monetary through that processing.
Is this new since 2019? This wasn't available?
No, this, actually, this document here is just an expansion of 2019.
So did we get those funds during the tornado?
We didn't apply for any mitigation funds because we had nothing, because we had the FEMA to apply for at that time. But there's still hazard mitigation funds out there that can be applied for. And I sat down with Bill Loew, and we went through different projects that, you know, if we needed to have hazard mitigation funds being utilized, we addressed that and put them into the planning process on an annual basis, saying, this has either been completed, or this is something that we might be.
And we didn't use any hazard mitigation funds during the tornado at all?
Yes, but those funds are still available, I guess is what I'm saying. But it was derived from 2019. As soon as that, and I don't think that that 2019 has been closed out on the federal level, as soon as it's closed out, that's when this one's going to be available.
So if we adopt this, do you have some grants in mind right now that you're planning to apply for, and how much would those amount to?
I do not, and I tell you the reason why. The grant process is also available to the cities. When we look at grants, I know one of the things we've put in here is putting generators into each one of our facilities that don't have generators as a possibility. The EMS annex down south, that might be a place if we could put a generator in. That would be a dollar amount that we can apply for when we're working through that process. The cleaning out of Stranger Creek, of Stranger Creek Big District, that had been done since, I want to say, 1995, was the last time Stranger Creek has. But that's a dollar amount that would come from Stranger Creek, Big Drainage District, to assist on that project. So the visionary is, yeah, we've applied for grants, they would come before you, the board, before we would follow through with that grant processing. The last one we did was looking at the mitigation buyouts, Ragout and Murrell, and that was on the books for a number of years, and it was denied on the federal government's side.
So when we adopted our comprehensive land use plan, it was kind of done in the same way, they had a, you know, somebody wrote it, it was a template, all plugged in, but we had a whole section on green energy and this type of thing, and we totally removed that from the land use plan as a commission. Can we remove sections of this without costing our ability to be able to apply for grants?
We cannot remove sections of the main body of the plan. We can change it, but we can't remove it, because if we remove it, it removes it also from Wyandotte and Johnson County. I'm going to use climate change for an example. Climate change is really something that FEMA and the previous, I guess I'm going to say the previous administration before President Trump took place, that climate change is going to be placed into all hazard mitigation plans.
Yeah, and some of the, and I mean, it's just, I've read this, and it's just strewn throughout.
Oh, yeah.
And even some of the information that they put on there, saying, the scientific consensus. Well, that's not how we do science. We don't do science by scientific consensus, because if we did, people would still think the earth was flat. So, I mean, I would like to see some changes before I, I mean, I'm not comfortable with this document.
And again, the main body of the document was put together by the state of Kansas and FEMA with recommendations, non-recommendations, the needed information needs to go in there. You know there needs to be some changes in there, and my opinion on climate change is very mincule to what needs to be accomplished. And when I say that, I'm on the lower end of that, because I don't look at that in a terrible need for mitigation moving forward. But it's something that we had, that we were mandated to put into the process.
So we don't have any control over the document?
Part that we have control over is the goals.
But that, like the climate change verbiage?
Yeah, that's kind of set in stone on that, and that's 105 counties across Kansas, and then all 50 states across Kansas, or United States.
But we don't have to adopt this?
You don't have to, but if we don't adopt the plan, understand that the cities that are in here, the school districts that are in here, their whole mechanism is that they have projects that they are looking at through their process, that if the county doesn't adopt, they're not going to be eligible. County has to have an adopted mitigation plan for this, these projects to move forward for hazard mitigation.
So we have to have an adopted mitigation plan, but then you say that we have to adopt exactly what they're telling us to adopt. I mean, we can't modify, I mean, there's a little verbiage in there, you said, we could adopt. Can we make change, you say we can't make any changes to the document?
We cannot make changes to the main body of the document. We can change the goals and objectives all day long.
So we're basically controlled by the federal government?
I would say that the mitigation plan, except for the sections that you're inquiring, is a good document moving forward. This was new on us, that climate change was needing to be put in there, and that was the process that we had to go through.
And I'm not against green energy, and I'm not against, I believe there is climate change to a point, but I don't like to have agendas pushed down from the federal government onto local government, and this is an example of Mid-America Regional Council, but it's an example of regional government, not local government. They're taking away from local government by forcing us into a regional setup where we don't have any, the voters basically have no say.
No, we don't say in this.
I know you know it.
You understand.
You can't argue with it.
We know you know exactly what.
Or you don't get the money.
Right, it's a bribe.
Yeah, or you don't get the money, it's the same game. It's always been playing.
I'm going back to the goals. That's what we need to be focused on.
Okay, I understand.
The goals moving forward.
I understand.
That's what we plan to be working on. We have Baserwood, Livingston, Tononoxi, Lansing, Leavenworth, it's all signed off on that.
What if those goals not achieved?
I'm sorry?
What if those goals not achieved?
We just, when we have to have documentation of why we didn't achieve it, we didn't have the funding.
Okay.
We couldn't obtain the funding. We were shy on staffing, and then they're good with that, we just move it to the next planning period, which would be 2029.
So we, I mean, I don't know if you've added, have you added up the entire, like, for our, all the amount in here, have you added that total?
I have not, Commissioner. You say the amount, I mean, most of it is going to be staff time, and there's some other stuff in there.
Well, it's got, they list, they list numbers on here throughout, and then it says, if it's a high priority or a low priority, and then it says, like, estimated cost, it'll say $500, or it'll say $2,000 per facility. So all of those would be a cost to some, some layer of the government.
Sure, sure. Those can be applied for mitigation, if it's got a number mixed in it, usually it was a mitigation project that we were looking at. If there's no dollar amount to that, it usually shows that it's staff time or planning time. So if we didn't, if we applied for that mitigation grant for that particular, I got IBAC system in here, it's modernized IBAC systems, I'm just using that as an example, because it's in front of me here, $25,000 per facility. If we did not obtain that through a mitigation project, you know, the grant project, then we just don't move forward with the project. It's not that we're obligated to.
So as far as our budget, we're not obligated?
That's correct.
Let me ask you a question about one of the things that, and it seems like it's pretty much, it seems like it's a template between, like, it's sort of a template on this part of the document too, is, because each one comes back to certain things. One thing is tornado shelters, offering tornado shelters in communities, or actually, a heat and cooling room for communities where, for heat mitigation, or cold mitigation, a place for people to go. That seems to be throughout. And then my question on that, in the past, we've talked about tornado shelters and how there's liability, because I've been trying to deal with Tononoxi and some of the communities, to get tornado shelters set up, because we're now having a proliferation of these slab homes, and we just had a big conversation about RHIDs. Those are all slab homes, no basement, no safe room, and if you don't have a plan, so your plan here says for safe rooms for heat and cool, but on tornadoes, we've said in the past that that opens up liability for local communities as far as having somebody to open up the church, or somebody to open up a public building. And to me, that would be a top priority for me, is that we get each of the communities to have a way, a shelter network or system, or fund people to have constructing these safe rooms, or, but you see what I'm asking about, we're saying to have these rooms for heating and cooling, but what about tornado shelters? Is it there a liability for both of those?
I totally agree, and let me explain. Let's take a Baptist church here in town. They decide they want to be a shelter. I cannot put the liability at the county for that shelter not knowing what it is, you know, construction-wise. Now, if they decide that they wanted to, the county wanted to apply for a safe room in that church, just use that as an example, then that FEMA 361 is what it has to mean to be a FEMA-approved shelter. Baserwood High School, they've got that big facility outside their athletic center, that was a FEMA-built facility with mitigation funds. We have several schools that have safe rooms within their school. Those, you don't have that liability because it's constructed properly. For me to go into a community, though, and say, Methodist Church is where we're going to go in the event of a disaster, that, you know, even a tornado, that liability, one of them not structural engineered, be able to make that a safe place. When you're taking the mitigation funding and building a storm shelter, which that can be done, and it's done quite a bit, but within the community of Tononoxi, for example, it can also serve as a heating and cooling facility, it can be a dual-use facility.
Yep.
When we're looking at that, and the liability, you still have to have insurance, what have you, that the building itself, the facility, meets the FEMA requirements for hazard mitigation funding.
Does that go with flooding? There are times, you know, in 93, we had that terrible flood, some people lost their homes, stuff like that, is that the kind of thing, you put in the same scenario as far as the heating, the tornadoes, the shelters for that?
In 93, we bought out all those homes in Easton, on the east side of the church, basically, on 231st Street. That was all bought out with hazard mitigation funds. And we did that spotting throughout, there was a couple down south of Lansing.
Yeah, I remember.
My land wood, that was all purchased. We have two homes left that we're still trying to get hazard mitigation funds to purchase out.
So as an emergency management director, would you encourage local communities, cities throughout the county, to implement codes that call for tornado safety protections?
Building codes is part of the planning process, and I would hope that the cities would, I can't drive where the cities go from, go to, as far as that, but that's something that we can encourage them to do.
But you would encourage them to adopt such codes?
Correct. I think Baser just went to 2023, I'm not for sure on that, but which would make that requirement.
It's just, we're going to have, I mean, if all these developers are coming forward, or if we actually did build all these houses, it'd be hundreds of houses on slabs in Leavenworth County that we don't currently have, and if we don't think this all through, there's going to be hundreds of people that are not going to have tornado shelter.
And building codes, I know there's building codes, Commissioner, I don't know which one out there, I think it's 2012, or greater, that on a single-story slab home that's a subdivision, the city can ask, or the county can ask those folks to build a safe room within their facility.
Yeah, that's true.
They don't have to have an underground facility built, but one room in the house has to, or a structure has to have.
Okay, any more comments, questions? Okay, Mark, did you want to add anything to it?
Mine's more procedural, Commissioners, you all have the document, and I think it's important to note, like Chuck just said, that this really, it's primarily a state document, what we're looking at are the goals for the county, which are the 50 that Chuck mentioned. If the board's okay with this, it does need to be approved, so I would bring it back on a regular agenda item for approval.
Board okay with that, Commissioner?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Chuck.
Commissioner, thank you.
Appreciate the update, guys. Okay, folks with the guns, come on down.
You want me up here as a sheriff?
Come on, Andy, that was good. Smile.
Folks with the guns.
Morning, Sheriff.
Good morning, how you doing?
Yay.
So I think what I'd like to do is to bring five of you up on a conversation that has been continually going on between this office and Mr. Lawfry regarding the 911 radial system that we have in place. And I'll start with just kind of a brief history on where have we gotten to.
Sheriff, could you put that microphone closer to you, please?
Is that better?
It'd probably be better if I used my hearing aids. I just thought I would have them on.
So after years.
You'd really put your hearing aids on.
After years of using a analog radial system, a system that served Leavenworth County was failing, both structurally and in relevant technology. In 2005, a special election was held, asking the voters of Leavenworth County to approve a sales tax, the proceeds of which would go to the entities within the county for projects, project funding of infrastructural needs, that type of thing. Leavenworth County used that funding to construct the current system that we use now, the P-25 Motorola radial system. It's a great system, it's a very robust system, it's a very expensive system. And so through the tax collection, enough funds had been collected to essentially pick up what was not covered through other revenue streams to keep the radial system operable for all those years. The system itself was just under $12 million, and we were part of a, the first foot in on the Kansas State system. Because of our location, we partnered with KDOT, who operates the radial system for the state of Kansas, and they wanted us as a player, because they could build their system going westward off of our system. So in all honesty, if we look at it now, 20-some years later, the system is overbuilt for what we would need now, because there's other agencies, other counties who have resources in place, but at the time, they were not there. As part of doing that, KDOT helped to fund some of the maintenance, the yearly maintenance, and some of the items that was necessary for the system to stay current. That has stopped within recent years. So we have been essentially 100% on our own covering the cost of this. Funds for it come from different sources, part of it being a state tax that you see on your cell phone bill, the 911 tax. There's been changes in the formula and how that's calculated recently, whereas opposed to, on an account, if there was five cellphone users, that tax was collected on each phone. Now, that tax is collected solely on one account, so five people living in a household on one account, there's only one tax being collected, which obviously diminishes the amount of tax funding coming in, which diminishes the amount that's distributed to the PSAPs, Public Safety Answer Points, for the 911 providers. So that's been another source of lost revenue. The system itself, altogether, is short of $1 million a year to run. And so in the last two years, we have taken money from the general fund to help shore up some of those shortages, total of $675,000 in the last two years. So we sat down and think about solutions to this. Part of the solution being, there's a lot of users on the system. It's not just Leavenworth County Sheriff, it's all Leavenworth County entities, all the cities use it, some school districts use it, all the fire departments use it, both the full-time departments, as well as the volunteer departments that are throughout the county. Largely, Leavenworth County is the only one paying for it, in addition to the city of Leavenworth, and that, they are also directing their PSAP funds for the upkeep and operation of the system. So this is not sustainable.
Andy, tell everybody what, just watch what a PSAP is.
PSAP is Public Safety Answer Point. When you call 911, that's a PSAP, the entity who's answering that 911 call.
Thank you, Sheriff.
So it's not sustainable at the current route, current rate. I have brought along with me, should you have questions, people who are a lot smarter than I am on this system, to include two of our representatives from Motorola. They have recently told us about an upgrade that's coming to the system that essentially will be mandatory for us, and there's three stages of it, the finalizing in 2032. So within a less than seven-year window, we have these three upgrades coming to the system, at a cost of about $6 million. So we wanted to bring this discussion forward to this body.
I could have waited.
That sounds like a roof.
To talk about, talk about, well, here's the frustrating, the system went live in 2008, it was put under the sheriff's office. We ran the communications center, and it's probably the biggest user of the system. At that time, we brought it to the sitting board of county commissioners, how are we going to continue funding this, you know, putting money back on a regular basis? And we asked several times, and we were told several times, don't worry about it, we'll pay for it as we need to. Well, that day has come, and I'm pretty sure there's no money sitting in the bank designated for this. So now we have to make that up. And speaking with Mr. Lawfry, I think the consensus, I don't want to speak for him, but I think the consensus that we thought of was perhaps another special tax, a sales tax, to where all users, people who travel through the county, there's a lot of usage on I-70, on the turnpike, a lot of wrecks, a lot of services that they call 911 for that we don't pay to support the system as it is. We have a lot of people who are not property owners who use the system, who are not paying property tax to support the system. The, there's not a real equitable way, I think, to have each volunteer fire district pay a certain amount. pay a certain amount, without double taxing the residents. So we're looking at a fair way to apply a tax. My belief is a sales tax is part of the most fair way to do it. At what percentage, at what rate, I don't know. I know the last one, the initial one, was one-eighth of a sales tax. Looking at some of the numbers of what was brought in, I don't know that that will do it in this short amount of time, but that's, that's not for me to decide as well, so. There's a lot that goes into the system, and I know we're in a constrained amount of time, so I'm trying to give you just a high-level overview of what it is we're dealing with and where we need to go. But we will sit, certainly sit here and try to respond to any questions or concerns that you may have, and work together to move it forward.
Andy, what's the, Sheriff, sorry, running so long, I was just calling. Is this the only system, is this what we have to go by, by to work, make it work? I mean, is there any other places? Another defense Motorola, I used you as a police chief in Lansing for years. Is there any other systems that we are available? I'm just looking at the cost, so I guess we're saying five, six years, we have to have the funds available to get this going forward? Is that what you're telling us?
So I believe the first, first deadline we have is in 2029.
What was that, 2020, '21?
Nine.
Nine?
Final one being 32.
Six million.
So you have to go up to the microphone.
Welcome.
This is Kirk Moore with Motorola.
Yeah, Kirk Moore with Motorola, account manager for Motorola, obviously, Leavenworth County, City of's account manager. I just looked down the road here, Johnny, retired law enforcement as well. So yeah, the three pieces that Sheriff is talking about, we're trying to stay, which I guess is a little bit unusual for Motorola, but stay ahead of these big purchases or outlining costs, and try to give the counties enough time, right, never enough time, but to think about saving funds, or how they wanna do it, you know, a CapEx, or knock them off one at a time. A good analogy I've been using, or I think is a good analogy, it's kinda like, it's time to do your HVAC, your hot water heater, AC furnace in your house. So it's not a whole facelift of the system, so to speak, it's just three main components that the statewide, the entire system, actually, it's gonna be nationwide, anybody that has a Motorola system would be challenged or charged with replacing these features. So 2029 would be when it, you'd have to have a virtual prime, so anybody that has their own prime site would have to have that done by the end of 2029, 2030.
And what does that mean, virtual prime?
The prime site space mainly going, so virtualized, less components.
Prime site is our power.
Okay. You like the main?
It's the hub of the wheel, it's the main power in our system. You're gonna update all the electronics in that, or all the computer components, or?
Kirk, yes. The thing is, I mean, yes. So the prime try to be done 29 at that facility, at that site. Then 2030 would be when the existing dispatch consoles at the PSAPs would go end of life into service. Obviously, they would continue to keep working, it's not like they would just automatically turn off. But if something goes down with those current consoles at the end of 2030, they would not be serviceable by Motorola anymore. I mean, obviously, there'd be a best effort if there's something available or purchase or something like that.
So what was the amounts on the three, the three stages?
So on the 29, the first one, the estimate given was between $700,000 and $800,000.
Or the second stage is in the next year?
2030, and that was a range of $852 million.
And then the big bulk is the third stage?
The one 32 was 4, 4.2 million.
What was number two?
The consoles.
Okay, but what was the amount, I'm sorry?
$850,000 to 1 million.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And then the third, the third piece would be 2032 would be the date for it, so the end of 2032, but what we call G to D series, so the G channels, it's a G series channel at each of the tower sites is being upgraded to a D series now.
And why is that so much more expensive?
I would probably have to defer to some of our engineers about some of the technical pieces of, you know, what that cost is, and what less, there's less footprint in the tower site, like so in the rack, where now there might be two racks, you know, seven-foot racks of all the equipment is being combined into one. And I can provide some information on the components.
Motorola kinda has a corner on the market on this, don't they? They, you kinda got the bulk of the market for, for these kind of-
At least in the state of Kansas, which all, I mean, obviously.
Answer, yes.
Yeah.
So I mean, what percentage of the market in Kansas would you say you have?
If I'm just picking a number, 80%, maybe?
80%? So you could kinda dictate what the price will be?
I can't know.
Your organization.
I guess. I don't know how else to really answer that.
It is what it is.
I mean, there's no competition.
There's three other counties, I believe, in the state of Kansas that are on, not on the Motorola or the, what we call state system, the casing system.
Do they pay as much?
I have no idea what they pay.
Sure you do. That's their competitor.
But I mean, they have their own core, they're not on the state system, they don't get the same, you know, availabilities, you know, what these guys would get. So, but I can tell you what they do have, is they're isolated, so if your county, say Riley County, for instance, has their own, like, they don't have their opportunity with everybody around them, so.
I got you, I got you, thank you.
So all the cities and counties in the Mid-America Regional Council, and our 911 local hub are compatible with this, right? They're all Motorola?
Yeah, we've been going around having a lot of these hard conversations with all the PSAP owners and the Mid-America Regional Council as a whole.
So everybody's having to take on this assignment?
Correct. I mean, we're currently meeting with the state of Kansas, I mean, they have 76 tower sites, so.
Commissioner, the, 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 the towers who have radio accounts for operation, they incur a lot of the cost, and that's how, so any EPSs, they're not going to incur the cost of the effort.
So dovetailing with our earlier conversation and our previous work session, this is all mandated. This is all a mandated governmental thing, there's no option. We have to have radials.
We have to, yeah, we have to have radials. We've made the investment. Now you gotta keep the investment alive and worthy. To answer the question that Mr. Smith, yeah, there are other systems out there. We went with Motorola, because that's what the state was using at the time. And quite honestly, we feel it's probably the best system out there.
Why, I never had any of that.
Well, and we have to be compatible with Mid-America Regional Council, cities and counties.
Could you come up? Could you, I can't hear you, I can't hear you. I'm old, I need to hear, I need to hear them. Morning, railroad ears.
So like the sheriff mentioned, when we built the system, we were kind of standalone, nobody around us had the system.
I remember.
Now, because Douglas County's on board, Johnson County's on board, Jefferson County, Atchison, Platte, we can borrow resources from their system as well. So as an example, K-32 in Linwood Road, we've got a fire, you know, vehicle fire, or a house fire, or something going on down there, we can switch them to wide area. With us, it's a wide area channel. For Douglas County, it's a primary channel that they use, but they're allowing us to use their channel for that area, so we have radio interoperability.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Yep.
And the prime site, the reason why they do it first, the prime site is the site within Leavenworth County that all of the other six towers speak to. And then that also creates a connection to the state system.
Is there any other upgrades that are gonna have to be made to the 911 system? Dovetailing with this, because if you're gonna put something on the ballot, you might as well get everything brought up to 100% where we're gonna need to be. Is there anything else we need to do, or is this the, is this the upgrade that's gonna be necessary?
Well, one thing I'd like to talk about a little bit, Commissioners, is it's not just a one-time expenditure, and I think that's what the sheriff was trying to point out. You spend the money, but then the next step is maintaining what you bought, right? And that's what we, we've tried to do over the years, and this is why the sheriff and I have had this conversation about a potential sales tax. It's not a sales tax just necessarily for the purchase, but also for the ongoing maintenance. If you're, you know, if you're gonna buy it, and you're gonna have it and maintain it, you have to have a way to do that. And the last two years, I think the sheriff mentioned the additional funding that we've put into this came from the general fund, and it's because we simply didn't have anywhere else to go. And this is, you know, my plug towards, this is a budget conversation we're having here, and sheriff wanted to get in front of it, asked to be put on to discuss this. Any sales tax discussion would have to wait until next year, because it takes legislative action. So, but in the meantime, we have to get a plan, and I'm glad that they came in and gave us enough time to have to make that plan. And so if we did a sales tax, I think the sheriff's working on those numbers, sounds like maybe they have some, but it's not just this purchase, it's what we would really need going forward. And I think that if we couldn't do a sales tax, we oughta really consider doing one for both the purchase and the ongoing.
We don't need to be coming back again.
So we're not, right, right.
So that would maintain the, that your 911 sales tax and maintain the whole system going forward?
That's the idea.
Yeah, that's good.
I was just going to let the Commissioners know that our towers, each one of our tower costs, if we was to break those out, just to replace one tower's $250,000. Towers lifespan is 50 years. And when we start looking at, not saying that they're gonna fall down at the end of 50 years, but that's something we need to start putting funding back for. Same with our generators, our generators, it's a 20-year lifespan. We put the system in in 2008, so you can kinda do the math here real quick, they're gonna be coming up. We feel they're pretty confident that the maintenance that we have been doing with them on a regular basis is gonna keep them going longer than that. But you're looking at $25,000 to $30,000 to replace one generator, and we got seven tower sites. And that doesn't take place of every other, we're talking almost $900,000 is what, as the sheriff said, just to operate on an annual basis of the 911 system.
So we really need to have a CIP for just that? I don't know if we do.
Yes, a maintenance replacement schedule. It's not a, it's not necessarily a CIP, because some of it's maintenance.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It's not an improvement, it's a maintenance type thing, but that's what we've talked about, and I think that's what they're actually working on.
On a regular basis, we'll go out and deal with issues at each one of these towers. And at each tower site, it's not dissimilar to a residence. In this case, a generator, you got two barred wall hanger HVAC or AC units that run it, there's a slave and a master, if you will, one will run, and then the other will run, so that they're not consistent. The temperature within the hut can spike at any time. There are alarms on those, you could have a high temp alarm, I can just give you one example of receiving a high temp alarm in Fort Leavenworth, if we went up, we dealt with the issue. It will sound when it hits 90 degrees. When I entered the hut, it was 144 degrees. We had already melted down batteries within one of our UPS systems. A UPS system to replace it alone could be $30,000. We were luckily able to utilize insurance funds to make ourselves whole after that one. But there's a planned obsolescence with each of the UPSs at those sites as well. Again, there's seven sites, but the prime site has two UPSs. It'll be about $35,000 a set to do those, so you're walking out the door at $70,000 at the prime site, $35,000 at the other sites within that ring. The ring that we refer to is just that, it goes around the county, it skirts the edge of it to allow us to have radio access throughout the county. I can recall in the early days of my career, there were places you couldn't make a traffic stop, because you simply could not get out on the radio. This system has allowed us to bridge those gaps. And like I say, there are so many components at each of those sites. There are, again, going back to what Mr. Gaha mentioned, the generators, we deal with those consistently. It's basically a car engine that sits there and tests every Monday morning at 8:00 AM, and runs for a certain amount of time. And then it may not run again for weeks, but it has to run.
At one time, yeah.
And if it doesn't, there's an alarm, and you're out there in a lightning storm or a snowstorm trying to fix it. We've been very lucky to have good partners with the people that we contract with, and along the way, we've learned a lot about fixing generators. You might not see it on an episode of Cops, but a lot of cops. But again, there are just so many pieces involved in it. The infrastructure that's in place through the system that was built through that 2005 to 2008 stand-up. Again, 2008, all of those tower sites were new homes, didn't have issues. You weren't having to paint, you weren't having to change out the cinder or anything else in it. But at 20 years old, you start to see those things, the walls start to crack, and we're having to deal with those infrastructure issues, you know? And those are the costs that the sheriff's talking about as you move forward. In addition to the planned costs, there are additional items within the structures that are aging out, where we're trying to, like a mechanic says, pay me now or pay me later, if you do your vehicle maintenance, it'll treat you well. So those are the things we're trying to do every day to take care of the system.
I'm glad it's got in front of us now. I don't know where we're gonna, how we're gonna do this yet, but at least it's a starting point. We got a couple of yours, I'm sure that, like you said, Mark, we're working on the numbers and stuff, and we'll have to have a discussion about how many citations, and how many we're gonna have to-
Unfortunately, at the county level, those funds do not come back to the county when they write tickets, so there is no motivation for them to write additional tickets to fund this. Just wanted to make sure that's clear.
Well, it goes to the state academy, I know.
Are there any fees you can put onto? I guess there's no fees available for 911 calls. Are you gonna develop a plan then, and put pencil and paper, and say, well, it'll have to be a quarter cent, it'll have to be a half cent, and, and then we gotta get legislators to run it through, so we can-
That is the current plan to do that, and then also, but, short-term, that, there's still a cost this year and next year that no sales tax can address, just so you're aware. And I think that's the other part of coming out.
I don't wanna hear that.
So in 2026, that when the budget, when we're doing the 2026 budget, there will be an amount that we're asking for, that will be coming from the general fund to continue to fund the 911, just like we have the last couple of years.
Like an amount, what's the ballpark amount?
Well, I think it's gonna be higher than this year, I think that'd be safe to say. So 350 is what we had, right? So it's probably gonna be 450, be my guess.
So the savings falling again?
Yeah, this one's a little slower falling, and you won't necessarily get hit on the head by it, but, yeah.
Well, felt my tip.
It disgraced me.
So you don't think there's any way we could handle all the costs in the budget?
Well, no, there's, not without increasing the mill levy significantly, because you're talking eight to nine mills just on that project, not including the ongoing. So that would be, I don't see any way that it could happen without a significant mill levy increase.
So the idea is that the sales tax would be?
Be a special sales tax to replace the equipment, and then also take care of ongoing maintenance issues.
So that would be less of a blow to the taxpayer, are you saying?
Well, it wouldn't hit the property tax at all, that would be the main thing. And then it also hits the people, you know, we were just having a conversation about who pays property tax and who doesn't. Well, I shouldn't say everybody pays sales tax, because they don't, but a larger percentage of the people who are making the purchases in the county do pay sales tax.
Ultimately, it would actually be less of a blow.
It would actually, I believe, if we, if done correctly, we could actually see a reduction in the property tax by putting more of that on to the sales tax.
Yep.
That's, that's our goal.
Something to note, because I heard your earlier conversation about Fort Leavenworth- Something to note, because I heard your earlier conversation about Fort Leavenworth, also, this affects the Leavenworth VA as well. We have allowed them access to our system, we dispatch EMS to all of the EMS calls up to Fort Leavenworth on our radio system.
Yeah.
And we also assist the VA with running license plates and things like that when their system is down.
Paid for, the property tax that they don't pay.
They're not being charged for that, they have access to it. Does anyone here know how many pieces of equipment that, that the fort has for fire?
I believe they have four apparatuses. Are you talking trucks?
Trucks, yes.
Responding four apparatuses.
Four.
And then they're part of the mutual agreement with Leavenworth City District, well, I can't say the district, Lansing City Fire came through.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's enough information. Anything else? Thank you, well, I might say thank you. I appreciate you bringing the information forward, and I guess we're going to have some work sessions to try to get this resolved. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Folks, if you don't have anything else, we are finished.